Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Let's go see her one this morning. It seemed like they were packed house and everybody's happy. Ladies and gentlemen, to our meeting, we're now handing off handles to the court, it's Lisa Lemon.
This is the attorney of another member of the city council, Tuesday, May thirty first. We have approval for this from May seventeen.
No issue.
Appeals, we have requests for a way to the notice ordinance on June the fourth, uh, commencing court from three P M. until ten P M.
Uh, who gets, uh, nine P M.? Okay.
On, uh, June nineteenth, on Dalton Street, from two P M. until eight P M.
Sure.
June the third through the fifth, Mem's Park, from nine A M. until seven P M. July twenty-fourth, Public Safety Memorial Park, from ten A M. until six P M.
Mr. Ramon, Mr. Perry, good.
Public carrying to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to, um, statewide express, compulsory shuttle service. Public carrying to send to vacation on portion of Magnolia Street. Public carrying to consider a petition of vacation on portion of Magnolia Street.
Any questions, counsel?
Uh, presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, we had some cancellations, um, Darlene Martin, um, Ray Wheeler. Uh, and Reverend Calamari. And, uh. Everyone else is, um, Lee Vaughn, Roger, Mary Morris, Opportunities for Entertainers, Robert Cawton Senior, Dana McElroy, and Jai Erby, Hannah Bush, Reverend Clinton Johnson.
Uh, Mr. Carroll, um, just bring your review of where she's, uh, going to be speaking about.
No, sir, but I do know her. If she may be talking about Say So on the U D C. Her, uh, mother's property is the property that is right up against the fence at Halsey Weave, uh, in the bulk of town, so she, you know, she said it happened a year or so. I don't know what happened with her.
And what about Mary Morris, um, Andrew Hurtmer?
No, I haven't, but when I read the profile, she is, she is asking about the agreement to come out and at least investigate the Devonshire House that was agreed to when she was here back in, what was it, February, March?
March.
March, and she's claiming that nobody's been out yet, so let me just need to follow up with her and do what we said we're gonna do.
Is this fresh enough, will we be prepared to give some answers at ten thirty?
Will be, yes.
Orders to tell over sixty-four zero seventeen, orders to adopt city, we have that held the code.
Um, I'm gonna have to ask that we hold this over. I sent you guys an email yesterday, which was, uh, delayed. Uh, we were okay in, uh, five thirty on Friday, and a little okay over the weekend, and all of a sudden, the ninth hour, we found, got a couple pickups. Uh, did most of the lawyers involved with this under the roof pad, I think we're all on, all on the same page. So if you guys don't mind, hold this up another week.
Get hold of chance.
Well, I mean, it's, 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 it's supposed to be, to be honest, it's a little bit better than hope here. Uh, in the ninth hour, uh, we've learned that there's a corporate divorce going on, where certain parcels are being given to other people with, that may have other interests involved, and they need to be heard at this time, and we just learned that on, what was that, Saturday sometime, uh, Casey?
Sunday.
Sunday, sorry, Sunday sometime. So we're just trying this out, and, uh, had a couple of lawyers actually work over the weekend, and more Labor Day, I mean, Memorial Day, excuse me, to, uh, try to keep us on board again, right, so we can be appreciated.
Mr. Bur.
Zero six zero thirty, orders to amend chapter six of the Mobile City Code, ambulances and other medical transportation.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Ramon.
If we could have Ms. Castle come up and just give us a brief understanding of why this is necessary, what exactly does this sound like?
West, good morning. Uh, the, my, her purpose of the amendment is to just reconcile the code with current practices. There are some provisions that are in the ordinance that have, are just not being utilized. For example, the, uh, advisory board is not populated, it doesn't, you know, there are no point names, it doesn't meet, the, uh, schedule of fees is out of date, and what the ambulance services actually charges, what the federal government permits, and, and that's been the practice for quite a while. Uh, additionally, the, uh, code has been clarified to require that all the ambulance services, except basic life service calls, uh, all the services that are, all the private services that are operating go on a rotation system, and they all have to take their turns accepting calls. There are provisions for emergencies when one company just can't handle a call at, at the time that it comes up, but there, um, that provision is underscored, and the rest of it is, uh, cleanup on, on certain provisions, on the special events provision, there was a requirement, uh, to, where the, uh, fire department was, uh, determining how, how much, uh, how many ambulances were required at indoor special events of fifteen hundred or more, and the fire department was finding it wasn't getting accurate information about how many people are actually attending indoor events, so they just deleted that requirement, and the responsibility is with the event sponsor. So there are just, uh, cleanups like that. One additional change is that, uh, USA, um, is now having, uh, has started, is about to start a service to transport its patients within its system at no charge for the transport, so the ordinance is amended to say that that does not require a certificate of, uh, public convenience and necessity. So it's a lot of housekeeping, basically.
And the, the only concern that I have is with the events coordinator planning for the ambulances and the oversight of that, and making sure that they do have ambulances at an event instead of that being overlooked. How do we make sure that if we have an event that's got over fifteen hundred people, we have the right medical care if the event planner is gonna be the one overseeing that?
Uh, pot, you know, the, the system had run on voluntary compliance by the event sponsors, so if we want to change that, I, I need to speak with, uh, the fire department. My guess would be that we would have to involve the venues, they're, you know, they're the constants in, in those services, and maybe have some kind of checking balance with the, with the, with the venues, but I have not discussed that with the am- ambulance, uh, you know, with the fire department.
Uh, I'd ask just, Chris, are, where, where do you see, is there an issue with the city being voted risk with this, or are we okay?
No, no, it's, uh, let me tell you this, one of the reasons we changed it is because it's not practical. What, what we do now, having the fire department burden with this, is not practical. They have no idea, they're not dealing with the planning, so right now, they have to go in and negotiate with people, and sometimes people don't even let them know. Right, what we're doing now is we're saying, look, event coordinator, you're now responsible by ordinance for taking care of this, and if you don't, then we have to come in. It's no different than, think about a building you have in occupancy, and we deal with fire code, so it, this is better for the city, because the event coordinator's gonna have a lot more information than the fire department is.
Thank you.
Nothing wrong.
Why, what is this July twenty-third, nineteen ninety-eight, why is that significant?
That, that is, uh, the, uh, day that, uh, Newman's began his ambulance service, and Newman's priest, this ambulance service preceded the predecessor to this ordinance, the, the ambulance ordinance, so Newman's was grandfathered into, uh, the ambulance, uh, into ambulance service without, uh, acquiring a certificate of public necessity, and, um, this ordinance amendment continues that grandfather.
You finished, man? Uh, Mr. Gregory.
Hey, well, just to be sure, the, um, event coordinators and the venues know to contact the fire department to set up the, the coverage?
Yeah, yes, and the ordinance does clarify, uh, that, as Ricardo said, that responsibility for assuring proper service is with the sponsor.
Uh, I think, I think, I think we should call the fire department to grab that arrangement.
You want us?
I'm good.
Ms. Jones, I'll get it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Castle.
Sixty-four zero thirty-one, result property located at sixty-two eighty-eight, one hundred and one sixteen, professional farm one and L B two, B two.
Gregory.
Orders to tell over zero-one four sixty-eight, authorized assignment and assumption agreements between the city, emergency, animal, L O C, and lineage logistics. Zero-nine four sixty-nine, authorized transfer funds from general funds service to capital improvements fund for Mobile County soccer complex.
Mr. Ramon.
Uh, um, I think this is a good move for us as a city, a good investment into an area that's seeing tremendous growth and attracting quite a bit of attention from a tourism standpoint, and, uh, the work that the county has put in over the years really starting to bear fruit. Drive by this complex, you see it full of kids playing soccer, adults playing soccer, lacrosse, and, um, because it is in the city, it's nice to see the city play a role and be a part of it, to show, uh, our commitment to tourism in, in this area in particular. Um, there have been several businesses or developers, that sort of thing, that have really looked at this area as an opportunity area, and I think we're gonna have, um, some exciting news coming down the pipe, we hope, in the very near future, about Magellan Park and the tie-in with the soccer complex and the potential aquatic center, so, um, sometimes we struggle with tourism inside downtown, and this is a perfect opportunity for us to take advantage of that, so I would hope you'll join me on that.
Mr. President.
Uh, Jones.
Just to get, uh, what Ben said, um, you know, we have a huge void right now with regards to aquatic programs, we, we have high schools swim teams with our pools, we've got city swim teams that have to travel to Balaxia host a home meet, um, so I think this is great, and I think, you know, when you look at average numbers of parks per city, density, um, this helps, we're, we're, we've got gaps, and I think this will, will help, it's definitely not gonna solve the problem, but it definitely closes that gap a little bit, and I think will be very conducive to the city and the county, and I think this will pay for itself, I really do, when you look at the revenue that's produced through these swim meets and, and soccer tournaments that are gonna come into the city, it's gonna pay for itself, so I'm excited about it, and, like my colleague, Mr. Shigal.
I agree with you also, Mr. Jones, uh, I believe it's gonna pay for, I know it's gonna pay for itself, you know, as all states, fun is money, you know, where there is fun, you know, that's, you know, there is money, and, um, you know, that's just part of mine too, you know, and as, you know, Councilman Ramon said earlier, the area is, is growing, and, um, you know, making more family, you know, harden, um, places, you know, for a guy to go, you know, it's, it's money, you know, so we're gonna see how much that's, you know, sooner than later, so five million dollars is a drop in the bucket compared to what we're paying on senior. Another consequence, and then also like for me and, um, Commissioner Hudson, well, her vision, she is a great visionary, she is a great visionary, and the administration supposed to have to, uh, her vision, um, for, you know, one thousand.
Zero-nine four seventy, authorized transfer of funds from the general fund to capital improvements fund various capital projects. Twenty-one four seventy-one, authorized contract with Geo-Centec for design and engineering services for the redevelopment of Stormwater Infrastructure in Langin Park. Twenty-one four seventy-two, authorized contract with Johnson Controls and a server replacement at the Mobile Alabama Cruise Terminal. Orders is being introduced fifty-seven zero thirty-two, orders to amend section fifty-seven H seventeen, Mobile City Code, a seat for vacation of streets, alleys, and public employees of petition, by petition.
Mr. President, please. Thank you very much, I'd like to commend, um, Mr. Allard, who's been in the administration for, I'd like to commend, uh, Mr. Allard and anyone in the administration who's worked with him on this, and, and again, uh, similarly, as the previous, um, issue that Ms. Castle talked about, this is just cleaning up, this is some housekeeping on this ordinance, and cleaning it up to make sure that, uh, it, it removes some, uh, some ambivalence in the language in several places, and, uh, makes it, uh, easier, uh, for us to adjudicate these various matters.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I'm gonna be introducing an amendment, um, I can have that out today, but with the vacation streets right now, the ordinance has written that for neighborhoods, that it takes a hundred percent of the neighborhood residents to get to the point where they can even recommend a vacation to the city and to this body, and a hundred percent is just not right. If you want to change the bylaws and covenants, which are so important that they supersede the U D C, that's sixty percent of the neighborhood. So I'm gonna put an amendment in that we follow suit, uh, with bylaws and covenants, and that we drop the, the percentage down to what it is for the state with, uh, bylaws and covenants being sixty percent of the neighborhood, again, that's, that just gets that neighborhood the ability to bring it forward for a decision, that's not a decision. So I, I think that's the right way to go, a hundred percent is absolutely the wrong answer, that's, we've seen that happen once in a, in a very unique situation, but I don't think that at this point you would ever get most neighborhoods, traditional neighborhoods, uh, to get a hundred percent agreement over something like that.
Ramon, just a second. Okay, so my questions right now are the, from the assessed value to the fair market appraised unimproved land, so if I go to the county tax assessor's website, and I look at any one parcel of land, is the unimproved amount that's listed on that website, the value that's used, or is it saying that if there's gonna be a vacation of the land, there's gonna be an actual appraisal order, and, um, does anybody know that?
No, there's, there's not gonna be an appraisal. The, the issue with the valuation, um, was due to some ambiguity with the language, assessed and fair market value are two different things, so you got, say you got a house worth a hundred thousand dollars, the assessed value is, on, on a residence that you live in, is gonna be ten percent of that, so the intent of, of this ordinance and, and the state law, I think, is for the city to get its fair market value of the land, if it's over five thousand dollars, from these vacations, because I think years ago, there was a, a street that was vacated, and then the city had to come back in and get another even, and they might have to make them pay for it, when they gave it to them in the first place. So this will get rid of the assessed, now the unimproved value on, if you look at a tax thing, it's gonna have an unimproved and the improvement value, uh, it wasn't really fair to charge, uh, a vacation based on the total value, which includes like the house, since they're not getting, you know, it's just raw, and that they're getting in the vacation.
I guess my question is that, that unimproved value, that is appraised value, are we just pulling the tax appraised value from the county website?
Yes, the state law says it can't be more than what's on the.
Tax rule.
Tax rule.
Okay.
Even though those are not.
My other question is, um, really regarding Councilman Jones' amendment that may come forward, is, uh, a recorded plat, subdivision plat, plus say a neighborhood, when that plat's recorded, it shows the, all the land and all the lots and all the roads and everything else, and the way this is written says you have to have a hundred percent of any landowner in there to allow for a vacation of any property, um, in the neighborhood, Mr. Jones saying it takes sixty percent. My question is, what would the implications be if we're not talking about your neighborhood, we're just talking about, say, an industrial park or a business park, and you have a through street with businesses living on either side, and that's recorded as one subdivision, um, could we have a scenario where forty percent of the businesses don't want it, and their business is adversely affected versus the other sixty percent that do want it, would be my question, and so, I don't know if sixty's the number, or maybe it should be a little bit higher, you know, to get a little more consensus up here.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. X. The, um, the, the streets, city streets, some of them are built by the city, some of them are not built by the city, but, but they're maintained by the city, once they're dedicated to the city, these are streets that are maintained by the taxpayers, and, so if the city's gonna continue to maintain a street, then it ought to be accessible by the taxpayers. Uh, so the, the issue with a platted subdivision is that, if we, if we only go to this way, it don't make any difference whether it's platted subdivision or not, when you, when you buy, when you buy a piece of property, I think you have the right to expect that, that your ingress and egress is not going to be restricted at some time down the road, that you're gonna be able to continue to enjoy that ingress and, and egress unless everyone similarly situated to you agrees to it, you, unless you and everyone else similarly situated agrees to it. Uh, I understand that a hundred percent is a, is a high hurdle, but, but I think the two counter arguments are, the city's vacating the street, everybody who's on the street ought to be able to use the street, or in the platted subdivision ought to be able to use the street.
Mr. President. Jones.
Yeah, look, when you vacate, the city no longer has the upkeep responsibility for that road if it's gone, the, the neighborhood and, and package assumes the responsibility of that road, uh, of this, a vacated street.
That's, that's, that's not. Mr. Jones, finish.
The second thing is, a hundred percent is absurd, and this is not a decision, there's public hearings that have to be had, it comes to this body fully proofable, but a hundred percent just to get to that point is not right. When have you ever had a hundred percent standard of anything since you were in kindergarten? That's just the wrong standard, and it, it, it doesn't allow for the voices that do want to be heard to be heard, and that's not what we're here for. So if it's seventy, great, I don't have a problem with seventy percent, but that's a, a, a large majority, just to get the discussion handled, it's not a decision, so a hundred percent is just wrong answer.
Mr. Grand Green, Mr. Carroll.
Uh, I'll wait on it.
Yeah, we just need to make sure exactly what it is we're talking about, because it's just a piece of property, like if you wanna close off an entrance to a street, right, it's not the entire street, so it's just an entrance to a street, is what we're looking at vacating, these are some issues that we've had over the years, people wanna close off the street, you know, so, so that's the actual, right?
Right.
Mr. President.
Uh, you know, not my district, it's, um, not my drum to beat, that's what y'all do.
It does, it's everybody's.
I, I, not my drum to beat this time, I think y'all got pretty good hands on that.
So if I, if I understand this, from Mr. Jones' point, if, in order to vacate property in certain areas, then a petition will have to be started by residents, I have to meet some other standards, pay a hundred dollar fee, get some various sign-offs of the sort, and then it will, we'll have a public hearing on that particular vacation, and then it'll come before the city council, is that correct? So the city council will ultimately be able to intervene if all of that burden is met. I think there's probably some middle ground where, yeah, it should be at a pretty high standard, because we don't need to be vacating streets everywhere, but to Mr. Jones' point, a hundred is a lot to get anything done, and can sometimes stop progress, you know, if you got one person, and this is just to get it to a point where we can have another, you know, when the city council has signed a final rule or anything like that, so, I think there's probably some middle ground, maybe a hundred, maybe a hundred and sixty somewhere, and, you know, probably feasible solution.
Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President, I agree with, um, Councilman Ramon's, um, I believe that a hundred percent is, is pretty high if you can get to that point, um, and maybe not sixty, but an in-between would be a great number, so we can even get the process started, so I, I think that's the, that's the best option, from what I could make.
One thing you could look at, uh, Mr. Jones, is how we rename streets, I think it's nine percent, um, but I know several times I had an issue that as far as in trying to redo a subdivision, trying to get all the neighbors and trying to convince them that I'm trying to take their land, it's like back in the day, the city used to have a alleyway in between the, uh, the, the, uh, the houses, and I guess the guy was short used to travel between the houses and everything, and then the city, you know, no one would have an alleyway, but now each neighbor get half of the alleyway in order to claim that they're vacated, and some of the neighbors don't understand that, are prop owners, and, uh, the time that I had to vacate, I had a harder time to convince them, so I do understand exactly what you're saying, um, but, um, you know, I do support you, you know, exactly what you're saying, though we may want to look at, is like, like a number of, as far as in how we rename streets, I think it's streets we do like nine percent.
Mr. Bur.
Maybe another suggestion is how we were now doing our traffic calling, is it seventy?
Seventy percent.
Seventy percent. I, it's, it's just another policy that we have, let me look at, possibly do that.
I'll talk to y'all, get another, get y'all to live with me. Thanks.
Zero-one zero thirty-three, orders to crack, knowing the reaportment, seven city council districts of the city of Mobile.
Carroll.
Yeah, this is just the map corrections, uh, to the previous ordinance submitted, I mean, I just, when it comes up for vote, uh, at the necessary common, or should we align this with everything else, uh, just ask that we table the other ordinance would be correct, uh, location of the pen, follow this one, simple, uh, maps, everything will publish, and I'll, all of you guys, if you're shooting. Send to you, yeah, but if you have it sent before, you can see that you guys lost it, I'll send it again, it needs to be, I'll have this in our, that's obviously.
Mr. President. Mr. Ramon, just procedurally, I think it makes sense to do what Mr. Carroll says, if we can pull the other two ordinance from, then, maybe tell over, if we can go ahead and pull those up today, and table both of those, that, when it shows up on our agenda in June, we'll have, uh, the mayor's plan, Mr. Carroll's. the mayor's plan, Mr. Carroll's plan, and any other plan that's offered between now and, you know, just a little bit of some future, you know, catch for that.
We can pull that from. Said that, I mean, we know the numbers, just type it right there.
And of course, our next.
Resolutions being introduced, zero-three four seventy-four, reappoint Kevin Alexander to Mobile Civic Century Advisory Board. Thirty-seven four seventy-five, recommend approval to receive more for issuance of a restaurant, retail liquor license for Chuck E. Cheese's on downtown Blue West. Fifty-eight four seventy-six and four seventy-seven, our assessment cost removal please, weakening group sixteen twenty-five and repeat, weakening group fifty-five. Resolutions being introduced, twenty-one four seventy-eight, authorize change or reform air conditioning for mechanical upgrades at the Arthur, Arthur Outlaw Convention Center, two hundred forty-three thousand.
Mr. Vex.
Turn it off for the next one.
Twenty-eight five four seventy-nine, except for the sidewalk easement for construction of sidewalks at eighteen twelve, Old Shell Road.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just, as a matter of information, I'd like to kind of know where we are on the sidewalks east of I sixty, on the Old Shell east of I sixty-five. How far, how far down are we? Jennifer?
This is the Union to Durant project, the easement. Once this is approved and we submit filed paperwork to Albot, we're ready to bid that project. And that's the last project we have on Old Shell Road.
So, so will we have, will we end up having sidewalks?
There's still going to be.
East of sixty-five on Old Shell, all the way, all the way to Rod Street?
No, no, there's still some gaps.
But this will take it from I sixty-five to where?
Um, can't remember. The Union Durant is a section, second project. The other project went from Union to, I can't remember the terminus, the side street on it, but it's basically, we'll get almost to Florida Street.
Almost Florida Street. Okay, thank you.
Thirty-seven four.
The reason I ask is because it would, it would be really nice to have an east-west route where someone could go from Spring Hill to downtown on sidewalks.
Yes.
I see, huh?
Thirty-seven four eighty, this is certificate of public convenience and necessity. Forty-seven four eighty-one and four eighty-two are the setting to the vacation of a portion of Magnolia and consideration fee for vacation of a portion of Magnolia Street. Call for public hearings, morning one, four eighty-three, call for public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience necessity to modern transport to operate a taxi cab service, scheduled June fourteenth. Forty-one four eighty-four, call for public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience necessity to Andre Dennis to operate a shuttle service, scheduled June fourteenth. Forty-one four eighty-five, call for public hearing to consider adoption of the Mobile Unified Development Code to replace the current zoning ordinance, tax sixty-four, the Mobile City Code.
Appreciate that.
Let's see, let's go five down the middle.
If that doesn't require a second reading.
And even administration.
The cruise committee at one o'clock, we're going to call, can't seem to hear upstairs.